Twenty first, twenty twenty, and welcome all the council who is here. We do have a quorum. We have one council member who will not be here with us. Councilmember Todd and Sid will be coming shortly. So we welcome staff who's joined us here this evening and also our, our public that have joined us for our meeting this evening. Thank you for coming. Our first item on the, our work session is talk about this beautiful flag box up here. So we'll turn the time over to Director Giles.
So Mayor and Council, thank you. I'm gonna introduce Christian Richards. I just met with Matthew Richards and I knew I'd get mixed up, so I brought the paper up here. So Christian, if he'll come up. So he came to me a couple of months ago. I think he talked with the mayor about this idea and I'm gonna let him explain it to you, the process he went through and what a great project that he come up with.
All right, thank you, Dion. All right, so when I first was looking at making an Eagle Scout project, I looked at things around me in the world. So I was like watching the news for things that may be in demand and other resources. And one of the things I found is there's been a lot of people not like knowing the respect of the flag and a lot of people desecrating it. And I figured that with this day and age of the, everything goes in the trash bin, I figured it would help to raise awareness and also provide a service where people could dispose of their flags correctly into this box. And the basic gist of it is if you put your flag in the box, we'll take the flags once there's, there's a significant amount and we'll have them be properly retired so that people aren't just throwing their flags into the trash, but they're able to be retired with respect.
And I'm saving one for you. I'm gonna be bringing it down and putting it in your box there. So anyway, because I've always waited for a scout group who was retiring them, but that's, this'll be a good place to pick them up. So we appreciate what you've done and, and we'll put it over in our community development lobby over there that will be soon opening up as soon as we get some, that finished up in the next few weeks here. So does council, anything else to?
This, it looks awesome. It looks really good. I'm excited that we finally have something that looks really nice to go.
Thank you.
And of course, I've loved this family for twenty plus years, so we've been very, very connected. And when Orin came home and told me about this, I was just thrilled. I think this is a great idea. I do also know, and I don't know how you're planning on retiring them or how this will work, because I know you are gonna grow up and you're not gonna be around to retire flags your entire life. But I do know that Follow the Flag during the Fourth of July ceremonies up at the Grove Creek Trailhead parking lot, I do know that on one of the mornings they have, am I remembering this correctly? They have retired flags. So just so that you're aware of that.
Thank you.
And actually, I don't know, Dion, what the, is he gonna help with the retiring? Is that something that you're gonna handle?
Yeah, we constantly have scout groups or individuals asking for flags to do a retirement program.
Okay, cool.
So I'm sure they'll come in pretty quick. You know, a lot of people.
Okay. So it's a very, very good idea. Thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else for us?
I think that's it. Thank you guys so much for hearing me out on this one and letting me put it in your building.
Okay, before you leave, let's see if we can turn this around that way and let's take a picture with you in your box. Our next work session item is our Strawberry Days Committee report. So would you please come forward?
Hi, my name is Amy Lindell. I am the treasurer for Strawberry Days. So our financial report, our revenue for this year was five hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars eighty-one cents. Our total expenditures were three hundred and ninety-four thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. So our net income was one hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-eight cents. To be a PRCA rodeo, we are required to have a certain amount in reserves so that even if we have a complete rainout, we can still honor all of our contracts that we make throughout the year for everybody to come in, do the rodeo for us. And we're working on saving up. Next year will be our one hundredth celebration and we're hoping to make it great. So our donations that we've made through the community, because, because Strawberry Days is such a community-based thing, we just wanted to let you know what, what we did with that. For Tough Enough to Wear Pink, for our ticket sales, we give one dollar per ticket and that was six thousand four hundred dollars.
When you say one dollar per ticket, is that the Breast Cancer Foundation?
Yes, the Tough Enough to Wear Pink is, is that organization. For Follow the Flag, we donated five thousand dollars to help replace the one that was destroyed during the microburst last July. Then for service-based scholarships to the seniors at the high school, that was six thousand dollars, because we had one, one young man who had deferred to serve an LDS mission and returned back the shares. So there were four that were paid for this year. And then to youth organizations and teams that volunteer at the concessions during the parade, for cleanup in the evenings at the rodeo and at the carnival, that was thirteen thousand and five hundred dollars for those groups that do that for us. So do you have any questions?
Did you guys also donate to Discovery Park? Or is that?
Oh, did we?
Was that?
Oh, that's great.
Well, I just wanted to make sure you guys got credit for that.
Didn't put that in the line item on that one, so, okay.
Just thinking, I mean, this is like a huge event, I'm sure with money and time and volunteers and how much you're giving back financially to the community is awesome. So thank you so much. I, that's just awesome.
Our volunteer hours, I forgot to write that down. We were over, we were over, I think seventeen hundred hours of volunteer time with it. So from the community and so if they're willing to come and top strawberries and work at Huck Finn Days and all those things, then we need, we need to give back to the community to do that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, anything new for this year or you're saving it for next year?
This year will be great. I promise you, but next year's... This year's gonna be great. Next year's gonna be awesome.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sounds like a theme.
There's our theme for twenty nineteen. I mean, twenty twenty.
This one's good and next year's awesome.
And I don't know if you guys have seen that Strawberry Days is holding a contest for the theme for this year and we're letting the public know, choose a theme and the Strawberry Days Committee will select out of those who've submitted their, they'll submit their theme and then the committee will choose. So we're excited to have the, and we might do this every year depending on how it goes, but we've already had hundreds of people respond, so it's been really fun to get them involved this early on.
Will we have time between that contest and the float builder to have that?
It ends Friday.
Okay.
So we'll choose a theme Monday. We're gonna go have our contact with you.
Okay, sounds good.
We, we thank you again for everything you do and hey, as far as the council and the mayor is concerned, we're just, we're just really looking forward to Strawberry Days, that whole, that whole, that whole week, so.
You guys, seriously, thank you for all you do.
Yeah, that's a big thing. Thank you guys.
Gotta give Scott, get Scott a golf cart this year.
I can just smell those Carney burgers right now, those rodeo burgers.
Two total knee replacements.
Okay, our next item on our work session is item number three, follow-up report on our rec center.
This is a first for me, so hopefully this works. All right. There it is. All right, Mayor Council, I'm grateful to be here, reporting on the happenings of the recreation center since I've been able to take over last April and some of the things that we've been doing and accomplishing a lot. You'll recognize one person here still left here in the audience here. We'll be talking about her, so she's just fact-checking me and making sure everything I say is correct, so. It was taking over, being part of the Pleasant Grove Recreation all my life, it was truly a great event for me and my life and it has been an incredibly hard year, learning experience, nothing that I ever expected, even though I've been part of it forever. But it's been, a lot of great things have happened too and I'm excited to tell you guys about them. Our first thing, as we all met together, was, as I met with each of the employees, there was one employee, Miriam Tomlinson, who's over our Funshine and she was over our fitness at the time and she was working way too much. There was, she was way too many hours and I just saw it all the time and she loved it and she wouldn't want to do anything else, but I, I knew immediately that we had to split that job up and my first thing I was able to do was we made some staff changes. And so we went and looked for a new fitness director to spell Miriam and some of, all the time that she was putting there. We had some great applicants for the position and we ended up hiring Andrea Vinker, who is actually here today. And she has truly brought an immediate impact with her history and knowledge in the fitness industry. She just wowed us in her interview and it's one of those, you're just truly grateful for the person that you're able to hire. And so we hired her and immediately, if you guys have been any part of social media and watched Pleasant Grove Recreation, we've had many people just say, say how awesome our social media impact has been and that's big credit due to, we call her Andy, because we have like three Andrias up there, so we call her Andy. But she, she had a very strong knowledge in social media as well. You've seen things like Workout Wednesday, Meet the Team Tuesday. She began holding meetings on Facebook Live for her fitness staff so that they could all be a part, because they're all a lot of busy moms and busy people, so everyone got to be a part of it and she, she created that. And then immediately she created benchmarks and accountability. In September, when she started, the classes averaged about eleven twenty-seven, as you can see in a two-week period. Our most recent average, we've been averaging twenty-two fifty-seven. So we are busy up there and it is due a lot to this time of the season, but it's also credit to a lot of the things she's implemented. She, with her instructors, she instituted a sixty-day level-up challenge. It's really holding them accountable for their classes that they offer and arriving to class fifteen minutes early, class intros and the minimum of ten people per class. And they really bought into it and if you guys have been around the rec center and going to the classes, you've been seeing that a lot of people are buying into it, because I'll show you in some of the numbers that come up here. And all of our work kind of culminated in last month, or this month, we had our annual fitness fair. And I've given you guys the numbers for the last, back to two thousand seventeen and as you can see, it's a thousand ninety-seven and two thousand seventeen, eleven ninety-nine and two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, eleven sixty-six. I wish I would have built this better than had a, what do you think now, two thousand twenty we did?
Can we say like shut the front door on this?
Yeah.
Because that is awesome. Fifty-three thousand dollars more.
She asked if we could have confetti come with her and stuff like that.
Boom.
Have confetti cannon.
That is awesome.
It really, and like I say, is, it was amazing to watch her work and the passion that took over with her and what she loves to do.
What's cool about that too, Tyler, is that we have vases that just opened up the street.
Yeah.
So it increased that much.
I'll give a little, I'm gonna give credit, because Orim Recreation has closed down this year, but looking at the passes, yeah, we collected a couple, but they did have North Orim Vasa as an option to go to.
The thing is, they've got other options and they're choosing us.
There was options between there and they're choosing us.
For reasons, that's awesome.
Some of them are, but a lot of them, those are three hundred and one plus passes than we've had ever before, so. And for an increase of fifty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-five and just memberships alone, so. She did awesome and the fitness fair was amazing. It was packed. It was a really great event. Then we sought out to get new sources of revenue coming into the recreation center. We, I had a contact through Utah's Perfect Game for Field Rentals for Super League Baseball. Last year, we did a little trial run, because we've had some, in the past, we've had a few things with them that we didn't work out so well, so we gave them a trial run and rented them a couple of fields and it, for boosted revenue to our concessions. For the field rental, it did about twelve hundred. And truly, we would like to see that continue, working with Dion and his crew, and we would like to see those, that money go directly back into those fields. Those fields need some love and we want to help out the parks crew. So working with you guys, we would love to see that happen in the future. If you guys have heard of the Free Play Pass, it's kind of a newer pass that a lot of people are getting, that we're involved with, is people can basically choose what rec center they want to go to. It's an all-encompassing pass, like they can go to Orim Rec, they can go to specialty gyms and all these things and we're a part of that. And last year, it generated five thousand three hundred and ninety-eight fifty-nine and more in memberships. So it's, those millennials that don't want to really be committed, I guess, or something to something, they can actually just go and use this membership and we've been able to benefit from that. One of the things that's awesome, if, our senior fit classes, they've averaged thirty-plus people and, and a lot of it's...
Is that up from past years? Is that up from past years?
Yes, it is. And a lot of it's silver sneakers and a lot of the healthcare, they, people are taking advantage of those healthcare benefits and they're coming in. And we have pickleball that's huge in our facility. A lot of people are playing pickleball and then we have a lot of great fitness instructors that Andy's hired that really know their senior fit and create it as an atmosphere for all the seniors and they even have lunches up there at the rec center, the seniors do, they bring lunches to.
Who's over that?
So, yeah, her name's Christine and she kind of takes the lunches and they, they love coming in and meeting and just chatting with each other.
That's awesome.
It's really awesome. I'm sad to say, the massage chairs that I was so excited about, they only generated ninety dollars in our first quarter. I thought more moms would be excited to drop their kid off and jump in a massage chair, but we're hoping it goes up from here. They're free to our facility, so we're not paying anything for them and they're actually acting as two more seats in our, so people like to just go sit in them but not pay for them, so. But we still get the seventy, thirty split off of those. If you guys have been up there, there's been some new equipment that we've been able, we were able to replace nine pieces of equipment through our lease program and then we also added two machines. We kind of put them out as demos. Andy did a great job, has, she's really good on video as well. She introduced the Hydro, which is the rower down on the bottom right, is, and what's really cool about that and it's been, people have loved it, is it actually comes with a trainer that basically talks to you as you are hide, are rowing on there, so there's on that TV screen. So that's a really cool rower. And then another big hit is the Lifetime Vibe right above it. It's a full-body vibration machine that the seniors have just loved and it's really helped with arthritis and lots of health conditions. To add that to a fitness center has really been a big plus for us, because it's, we really want to offer something for everyone and they really love that. You can see the boost in membership attendance, I give you those numbers as well. September, just, you can see from year to year, we're all the way up to December, from two thousand eighteen to December of two thousand nineteen, we, we're up in just membership, three thousand three hundred and sixty-nine people coming through through that month. So we are seeing the use on our equipment. We're going, it's, it's been a big burn on our equipment, so we're working through a lot of our equipment, but it's good to see.
And is most of the equipment still on the lease program?
A majority of it is, so we, we can usually generate and do about ten a year and so when the bikes, when the bikes are involved in the fitness, in the cycling room, it's kind of hard to get them all on the three-year lease program, but we, for the majority, we have it, so. Just wanted to go over employment at the rec, we are having a hard time filling jobs at the recreation center. This causes a lot of stress on our staff and we literally don't have a single applicant sometimes on some of our jobs that have been posted. So we've been looking at other places to go with that. We've been finding luck through, indeed, in alternative ways. But we also wanted just to create an atmosphere immediately for an employee to love working at the rec center. So we came up with this Employee Spotlights and Information Board. We started recognizing employees each month for the amazing things that they've done and through spotlights, employee spotlights, and we introduce them in front of our management staff and really give them kudos for all the things that they've done. And then immediately, right when someone's hired, we do a get-to-know-you on that board, so we get fitness instructors that sometimes we don't even get their names, sometimes in the past, we can get to know them pretty quickly through this get-to-know-you board. It's really been a benefit and then we, you can see we put birthdays and announcements and all sorts of stuff on there, so we can get to know people a lot quicker.
Tyler, when you say you're having a hard time filling positions, is that seasonal, part-time, full-time, what positions?
Seasonal, part-time.
Like the refs, kind of things like that?
Mm-hmm. Like a lot of it's for Vanessa's programs, getting, we need like an adult for adult cooking class, we're just, they'll just sit on there for three months and not a single application, so. Just quickly, recreation programs and the other thing, when it just, when we look through things, we offer fifty-one plus programs that we run throughout the year and we really want to do something for everyone. I highlighted a couple just really quickly. Junior Jazz, we are up a hundred and thirty kids this year. We had a big increase in our high school and so it's really cool to have those kids still playing basketball at that age and enjoying it. And our Christmas festival, we saw the most numbers we've ever had. I love the picture down on the bottom right. That was our turkey burn and we filled gyms two and three with two hundred and fifty-plus people taking a high fitness class on Thanksgiving, so. It was just awesome. I love being a part of it. I love being a part of recreation, so it's awesome to see people benefiting. Just a couple of current projects we're in right now. The front desk reconfiguration, we're getting some of the stuff back from that, renderings of what it would look like. The lobby area at the recreation center is wide open as you guys, you know, when you come in and when we get busy with two people occupying both of my secretaries, people can just walk right by there. And so we can't really account for people, we can't create a better customer service environment, because people aren't talking directly to employees, so we're, we'll be showing you some renderings coming up as we have our retreats and stuff of what that's gonna look like. And then bleacher maintenance and repair is one more thing we're looking at. Our original bleachers from two thousand seven are starting to show their age and some will not go completely in and it's, it's just causing safety for, problems for us as employees and also the public, so we're looking into repairing those as well. So that's a couple of projects we're working on and that is it. Any questions for me that you have?
I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Fabulous job.
I would like to get a hand for Andy, because she's doing awesome.
I'll sit for both of you.
And she can't.
Yeah, we know who will be interviewing if you ever leave this position, so.
I would highly recommend her. Yeah.
When's your busiest time?
So, and part of the day?
Yeah.
So five o'clock, you would be amazed at how packed that place is.
Early AM.
AM, five o'clock AM. And then when moms get kids to school, about nine o'clock, we see another influx. And then, and then at nights, when all of our leagues are going on, we have men's basketball going on and there's just people all over the place, so.
So when do you reach a point where you're over capacity? Have you been there?
In a couple of our fitness classes, we're getting close. So we have about, High Fit's really popular right now and Bar and they're running about thirty-seven, forty people in their class. So it's a good problem to have.
Good problem to have.
We'll find places for them.
You're doing something right. But we just still need to maintain the patron experience there, so they want to come back and.
For sure.
So that's, anyway, great job. Anything else for?
No, just thrilled for all you're doing.
Thanks for the support. Appreciate you guys.
Appreciate you.
Well done.
Our next item on our agenda here is to give some time to Daniel to come forward and brief us on our one public hearing this evening. Can you ready to do that, Daniel?
All righty, give me one tiny second while I log into the, to the screen. Okay, I'm only gonna take maximum ten minutes if I can explain this clear. So this item, there we go. This item is a continuation of the item that we saw last, last meeting. This is for a code amendment where the applicant is proposing to increase the number of attached dwellings in a building of townhomes from six to eight. So what the applicant was presenting was to, again, to go from six units to eight, which is an increase of, what, thirty-three percent, kind of like that?
But he's not increasing density, he's just...
No, no, no. He's increasing the number of dwellings in, on a building, on a building, again, from six to eight. So if the density is forty, it will keep it at forty. I'm still gonna get forty, just how the applicant rearranged the, the units, that's what he's proposing. Our code right now only allows for six in regards to townhomes, one next to each other, only six units. Again, the applicant would like to go to eight, okay? Again, the number six is, is six is customary, but the applicant has some developments that he has done lately and he provided for some examples of projects that he has done. Staff visited those projects and I realized that, again, most cities have about two, six units the same, okay? However, some cities allow to a little bit more. Now, whether they do some changes in the design or they ask for extra requirements, some setbacks, a little bit more staggering, that's up to the city, right? So I visited a couple of, couple of projects the applicant has, has done in the past and first example is this building right here, okay? This building right here, if we count them, there's six units in that building. However, they're not in a linear pattern. They're kind of like are in a L-shaped type of a situation, which I think is a, is a good idea to break the mass, we're gonna call it like that, break the mass of having eight units in a large building. That way, the applicant has... That way, the applicant has five on one side, and then three on the other one. However, the applicant during that meeting told us he had no interest on doing something like that, right? Another project that I visited, and I think this is very important one, and I would like to focus on this a little bit more. The project, I put it in a red circle, the project encompasses, it's all of this, okay? It's called Diamond Rich. Here in this project, we show something, a very interesting design idea. So, this picture right here, it looks great. I mean, this picture, it looks clean, it looks like a good angle. That picture is taken from where this dot is. And the number of units is one, two, three, four, five units only, okay? Now, the, it shows some, I don't know if I can say this, amplitude, it's wide, because right here next to it is the road. So, the fence that is right here is actually a metal fence that is very, very open. So, there's openness, again, there's amplitude, it's clear, it's, it looks okay. These apartments are different than any other townhomes, because these are what we call nowadays rear-loaded. And, and they're going all over the place, these rear-loaded apartments. That means that the garage is on the, on the backyard, they have their own road to, to access to it. And then, in this case, for example, this is the front. This, what you guys are looking at here is the facade. The cars enter right here. Now, this is the interesting situation. Again, the property line right here goes to a street, and then there's amplitude, it's open. In this situation, right here, there's neighbors living right there. They can put a fence up to 10 feet if they want to, right? That creates a situation with these apartments right here. We have one, two, three, four, five, six townhomes, they're rear-loaded, and the front setback is right here, okay? When we have a situation like that, we are creating an alley, an alley. Or setback requirements right now are 25 feet. This project right there has 25 feet. When the staff did the field trip, everybody uses this as their front, leaving this as the back, even though it's the opposite, creating garbage, a lot of waste, it doesn't look okay. Now, what the applicant is proposing is to have the same type of product, but add two more, right here. Create a longer alley in that situation, okay? Now, actually, I have a picture of that, how it really looks. There you go. That's how the front setback looks like, okay? As the staff see it, it's not, it's not a desired front setback, okay? Again, this is the case of that one. That picture right there is taken as someone is standing right there. Holy cow, right there, going that way, okay? I have another picture, there you go. It's the same situ, it's the same place, same situation, you're just standing on the opposite side right there. And you can see that's not an appropriate, or a desirable, if I may say, setback, or front setback, okay? Now, same exercise, I went to another development that the applicant did, and I would like to focus, again, I, I don't look at these buildings right here, because it's a different situation. These are L-shaped, correct? These ones actually have also L-shaped. But if we look into this circle right here, the applicant has not eight, has one, two, three, four, five units. But look at the setback right here. The setback is a little bigger, the units are not flush against each other, there's a staggering setback, okay? And creating, creating, on the, on the units in the middle, which are kind of like set a little bit more toward the back by 10 feet, it gives the, it looks like that, okay? So, again, if you measure from here to here, you're getting 25, 30 feet. But from here to here, add 10 more feet, and you can see that they create kind of like a little plaza walkway, that, again, from the perspective of staff, this is a more desirable product, okay? So, having said that, and visiting this, what the staff worked on it was to create some type of a situation that will allow a little more of amplitude, a little, a bigger area, a bigger setback, and then we, definitely, we can call this a front setback, okay? I'm doing a little image that may help us a little bit, and I'm going to tell you what projects we're facing. This right here is Smith's, okay? This is Smith's. So, we can have a flat eight units, something like this, or we can have like, sorry about that, something more like this. And again, in the, in the, these are just little squares, but in the vision of the staff, this is way better. We can create something right here that makes it look more as a front setback, more desirable design, if we want to call it this way.
How many, how many units in there? Is that six or eight?
Eight, eight. So, what staff proposed, and we met with, with the applicant a couple times, and we know the, the nature of the, as I say, the nature of the beast knows that, the nature of the game, this is the name of the game. We met with the applicant, the applicant was going to propose something, staff was going to propose something else, and we tried to get in the middle, all right? Some, some give and take, it's always like that. And what we end up is creating some language right here, so it's from six to eight, but these are the conditions. So, it goes like this. For rear-loaded buildings where seven or eight dwelling units are attached in a linear pa, in a linear pa, pattern, and the front setback faces a neighboring property line, the building should present staggering setbacks with a minimum of 10-foot difference, meaning that the units in the middle should back up a little bit more, so then that, we create that little area in the front. The dwelling shall be arranged such as four interior units have a 10-foot larger setback than the remaining units on both sides. The setbacks are measured from the outside wall of the building, okay? So, in other words, what we create is language that instead of having this type of building, will have something like this. Here, you'll have two units, one, two, four in the middle, and one, two, again, right here. Now, what the applicant is proposing is to make this area right here, or at least in the last conversation that we had, is to change this to make this smaller. So, instead of having four together, push back to have maybe two or three, or one, okay? And again, staff is staying, staying firm on requiring at least four, otherwise, you don't have that area, that amplitude on your setback.
Was that, was that his range, one to three? Or did he say three instead of four?
I usually don't like to bring site plans, because site plans are changed like this. But the applicant showed me a site plan that he has in mind, okay? Again, this is the work session, and you think it's okay to bring it up, Tina?
To talk about kind of his site plan, his proposed site, just with the understanding that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Attorney Darrington. That will be fine.
Okay, so here we go.
That was a put-down, by the way.
Wait, so wait, what does the attorney say, actually?
The attorney says you can bring it up as a discussion item only.
So, again, but let's not focus a lot of this, because this, to be honest with you, at 9:00 AM, I had a version, and at 11:00 AM, I had a different version.
So, I'm not worried about the site plan, but what I am saying is that for si, for six straight, for six units, he can go straight.
That's how the code is written right now, yes.
But if he goes to eight, we actually have a conversation about how the breakup is, and we are determining the breakup, or he's determining the breakup?
We are determining the breakup. And what we're proposing is two long units on each side, and, and four in the middle, setback a little bit more, okay? Again, for example, to give an idea...
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but just as a point of explanation, because this is a conditional use, we are setting forth the conditions in the code, right?
Okay, so why?
So, if we don't, if we don't, and it goes to Planning Commission, and we try to impose conditions there, aesthetics is a very difficult condition to justify.
It is, it's very subjective.
Right. And so, we would rather have it in the ordinance, and, you know, this, agreeably, agreed, this is a very, it's limited to one option, basically, right? It, it doesn't provide a lot of flexibility for different arrangements of the building, but it does, it does meet the needs and addresses the concerns that community development has with creating a long, narrow alleyway when you're facing not an open public street or an open area, but rather an, another property line.
Daniel, was, was there any discussion about not only just setback, but staggered?
Yes, so by pushing the...
Because here you have it all just lines and straight lines and...
Correct. Well, the staggering, I think the best staggering doesn't come from just putting one or two feet on the facade, but for me, the staggering occurs when you have at least 10 feet pushing it up. And that's what the staggering is. On the image that I show you, they have four completed to the back, two on each side, or in case you're seven, you do two and one. Now...
Okay, wait, one more thing.
Go ahead.
So, why are we making this a conditional use as opposed to part of the ordinance?
So, we're not making, we're not making it a conditional use, it already is a conditional use, we're just clarifying, we're, we're changing it from six to eight, and clarifying what we want if you go to eight, this is what we want.
Okay, I didn't realize that this was a conditional use.
Yes.
So, Daniel, Daniel, my question is, these, these right here, you kind of have a little bit of staggering going on right here, right? Or not?
In, in, again, from staff, and again, this is what we gave away a little bit to the applicant. For example, in this unit right here, there's eight of them, but your front yard goes to an open area. I, I, as the staff sees it, that gives enough amplitude, and we don't, we're not requiring anything else. So, again, when you, you can easily come out of your front yard, and then you see a big areas where you have some trees, and it's wide enough, it's like actually 60 feet, we're not requiring anything of that. The code is very specific, and that's where, when we, again, meeting with the applicant, trying to give away a little bit, is saying only, for example, in this unit, this unit is facing right here, six, seven, eight, nine, 10-foot wall tall. This unit right here, this one, this one, this other one, okay? In reality, if we, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, go ahead.
No, so if I get it, he's, he's proposing something like this, and you're proposing more of what you show us the L-shaped, I mean, not the L, that kind of a U.
Look at this, this is what he's proposing, okay? And what I'm proposing is instead, these two units right here, these two that are sticking out, is sticking back, where the black, where the red line is, to create again, a little bit of more amplitude in this area right here. So, one thing that the applicant says is that he's trying to bring families into it, and by creating bigger units, he brings families. In reality, in this case, for example, this is a site plan, all the units that he might lose, and he's not losing units, but making them smaller, is one, two, three, four, five, and six units total. The units that are not lost, they're just units that go from, from four bedrooms to a two, or three bedrooms to a two-bedrooms situation. Does that make sense? So, he's not losing, with this code either, he's not losing any units. He's just making them, six of them, one, two, three, four, five, and six, he's making those units a little smaller to allow for more room in that area to create feasible front setback, okay? Again, these units are rear-loaded, and my concern as a planner is that if we don't create a feasible or usable front setback, everyone's just going to come in their car, use their backyard, and this will be used actually as a backyard, where you let your dog go, and you put the garbage right there, you hide your old washer or whatever in that area. Again, we'll create that situation where we have something like this, when at this point, we can create something like this, okay?
So, the green, that area there behind, is that all common area? So, it's not owned by the individual unit?
No, these are going to be rental, rental units.
They can't come in and say, well, I want to turn my back, my front yard into a dog run. They can't do that, right?
No, so the, all these areas? It's common areas.
Okay.
Same on the, let me go back to this.
So, Daniel, do you know why he seems against doing what he's done at other developments here in Pleasant Grove? Because it seems like he's made it work, the staggering in the, in different developments, so why not here? I don't know.
Maximize his investment.
And I'm going to be speculating, but I'm pretty sure you can rent this unit for more money when you have three or four bedrooms than when you have two bedrooms.
Absolutely.
And again, I'm speculating.
It's to maximize his investment.
Well, and that, that's a good question to ask him when he's here. I mean, ask him, you've done it in other projects, why not here in Pleasant Grove? What's the difference?
Just assuming, but, okay. Again, this is not a proposed site plan, this is something that he's working with, I'm pretty sure this can be changed tomorrow or the day after, but it's a good example just to show what can happen. Again, staff is giving away in the fact that we're not requiring that much staggering, for example, on these type of buildings, right? You come out to this one, you come out to a huge park that you own, that you feel like a home. It's the situation when you create a narrow space between the building and a property, neighboring property line, okay? Do you guys have any questions?
Counsel? Okay. Yeah, that does, I like that whole concept there, a lot better than...
Better than that?
Than that. That's just a, that's just a dark alleyway down there.
On, on someone's mind, you could say, hey, this is staggering, because you have a, a little overhanging right here. And again, staff doesn't consider that enough staggering to be, to create a different type of situation. What we are looking for is to have a viable, usable front setback, front yard, okay?
Okay, and this is what the Planning Commission is, what's their feelings on this?
Okay, the Planning Commission, the vote of the Planning Commission was four to three. He went, the, he passed recommending this, four of them.
Oh, recommending that?
Yes, four of them.
Four to three.
And three of them went of something more like that.
Yeah, so the four that said yes in Planning Commission were okay if there was eight and they were flat.
Okay.
The other three said, in essence, I think we're okay at eight, but we want them staggered. Is that fair to say?
But then Mayor Last Meaning, when it came back to us, we wanted him to go back. We didn't like the eight straight in a row.
Right.
So, now we're a little bit of an impasse, because...
One more question, so is this the kind, did he, was there a compromise, or is it just that this is, this is what I'm going to present, and then this is what you're going to present? Was there any kind of middle ground, or...
Well, again, staff kind of like tried to find the middle ground, but I don't, according to my last conversation around noon with the applicant, he still wanted it less than four units to push back, bring them a little bit more. But, I mean, we compromised in the idea, for example, that it was going to be only for the buildings facing a property line, where you create a narrow space, not for everything else, but just for those units. I mean, we, we gave away that, staff, and again, I, based on the field trip that I did, I thought it was a good idea to have a big, open area, even though they're not staggering, but you can see that amplitude, it's viable. And so, we, staff, kind of like meeting in the middle right there, but even, again, after my last conversation, I think the applicant wouldn't like that much staggering as what staff is proposing.
And has he done this in other developments, the, like the...
That's his development.
The H with the U-shaped type of thing, or...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, again, um...
So, this isn't new to him?
No, that's, that's his development right there. That one is in, it's in South Jordan.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, for my presentation, I can show it to you, I'll find it really quick.
Was that top right, was that a flat roof, and it looked good? I know. But it, it looked good.
I saw that double vote for a flat roof, so anyways.
Did you see how nice that looked, though, on the top right?
Yeah. That's why you're over here now, you've been moved over here.
Anyway, that's what I have, but I'm, I'm here for any questions, so you guys have any questions?
Well, I, I love...
Questions for the applicant.
I like the, it just doesn't say staggered. I think, I love that there's some definition to it, so I like that 10-foot.
So, Daniel, what, on our, our public hearing, and in what's before on the, to amend our thing there, is the staggered, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It was the language that was in red on that one slide.
Let me go back to this.
Yes, please go back to that one more time.
There you go. So, before, it was just going from six to eight. Now, what we're saying is, in order to go from six to eight, you got to follow number three right here, which is this language in red.
Okay, red now.
Which requires the 10-foot difference in the staggering.
But this is only for rear-loaded buildings?
Yeah.
Period.
Period, yeah. Period, yeah. And that's, again, another situation where we try to work with the applicant, and, yeah, come up with a good price. That, this is the image that I, that I show you. That's the aerial view. That picture that everyone says looks good is standing, someone standing right here.
Yeah, look at all those flat roofs.
That's not the one I was talking about.
Okay. So, as you can see, this neighbor, again, this neighbor can go ahead and do a 10-foot fence right here, 10-foot fence. But again, you see how these buildings are set back? This is exactly what the staff is proposing. What you can see on that building, I'm going to use this, what you can see in this building, again, there's the two units on the outside, and the four units in the inside, set back a little bit. This is a great example. We find that way more desirable than having all the units right here at 25 feet.
Right.
Okay, one last question. This is just for the CS zone that we're talking about here. But what happens if said developer wanted to come in and do staggered every other one? Is he allowed to do that with this, with this now written that way, or not?
The verbiage.
The verbiage? Let's say he wanted to just stagger every other one.
No.
You can't do that.
No, because again, what we're trying to create is kind of like a little courtyard on the front setback that allows for people to, and allows that amplitude. When you have them on a zigzag, again, it's hard to create that special area. At the end, you still get your four units, it's just that we group them together, the four that are pushed back a little bit more to create that area in the front.
And these are the only two locations in Pleasant Grove where we're having this conversation.
Correct. I have a image right here, I mean, it's here in Blue Beam. It's that area right there.
It's CS2 zone, right?
Yeah, so it's the two of those, it's both of these pieces. Okay.
It's just that, and I don't know if we have other CS2 area that's not developed.
We do, but we already, it's under legislation, we're working on it. So, in reality, this is the only two. Now, again, I think the applicant only wants to apply it to this one, but it will affect both of them, both of them. We don't have a site plan submitted for either or. And again, site plans change in a matter of minutes, right? So, I think, I think, there's a question for the applicant. He only wants to apply that rule to this area right here, but it's not set on the stone. It could be applied to this as well, at any time. Okay? Let me see if I can find something else really quick, in two minutes. If you guys, Scott, if my time is up, just let me know, and I'll...
Well, there is one more thing we had one to cover here real quick.
If people want to see after our work session, they can come.
All right.
Check that out.
The setbacks are measured from the outside wall.
Scott?
Yeah, I just want to briefly cover item 9B, which is our recycle rates. So, I gave you a letter, which in essence talks about, the first three paragraphs are the changes in recycling in the last couple of years, which, I mean, this is a simplified version. It's a little bit more complex than this, but the short answer is that with changes in China, and their willingness to take recycled products from the United States, really changed the recycling industry once they said that they pretty much would not take anything contaminated. What Reese has told me with Republic Services is that, generally speaking, they have about a, almost a 20% to 30% contamination in recycle bins. So, as much as we think that everything we throw in there is recyclable, almost a third of it is not. And so, what they would do is they would just bundle all that, send it to China. China would take what they could recycle, and then they landfill the rest, and they're realizing that they were landfilling for the whole world because everybody was sending all their product to China. So, China said, we'll take your product, we're only going to take certain things, and your contamination has to be less than 1%.
Wow.
Which kind of means they're not hardly taking anything at this point.
I saw a thing on television a couple of weeks ago, that, that which they were not putting in landfill, they just dump in the ocean.
Oh, were they? See, that's not good either.
And that, and then they showed some of the islands and the current, and they had five or six acres on, out from their beaches of plastic stuff floating.
So, this is a worldwide issue. I mean, it's just not the United States that was sending their stuff to China, but it has affected the United States. The United States did not have the infrastructure really to handle too much recycling in-house. Most of it was being sent out. So, the industry is changing. According to Reese DeMille with Republic Services, there are recycling plants now that are being built as we speak to kind of catch up. Right now, they're not online, and so, right now, the cost to recycle has gone up because now these recycling companies are taking this product, and they're, they're struggling to turn it, turn it around, and they're able to send it to China for real cheap, and now they can't. They have to send it to other places which are more expensive to take care of. So, in turn, really, every city that recycles has been having to make a decision. It's either increase your rates now because the cost has gone up, or to discontinue the service. So, some cities have discontinued the service. There was an article in the newspaper just a couple of weeks ago that Cedar City is no longer going to provide recycling. I think they're the only one in Utah that I'm aware of. There have been other cities that have had that discussion, but Cedar City is the only one, to my knowledge, that's actually discontinued it. What we are proposing as a city is that, working with Republic Services, that our costs would go up 70 cents per can. So, right now, it's $5.90 per month for a recycled can, which has picked up every other week. It's not picked up every week, but every other week. That is the same rate that we've had for the last 10 years. We implemented the recycle program, the first month that it was built was in July of 2010, so almost 10 years. It's been 5.90 the whole time. And part of that is, is the industry's been pretty stable. The costs of, there's been times where those that are in the recycling industry have actually made a little money, and then there's been times where they've lost a little money. But nothing has been as drastic as it's been the last two years when it comes to that industry. So, as a result, as a city, we have not had to change our rate. We've been able to keep it at the 5.90 and be able to provide the service. So, that's been a benefit to us and to our residents, but now, the situation that we're in is that we would need to increase that rate. Now, there are alternatives for our residents. Recycling is not mandatory. Either they can discontinue the service themselves, and we can come and pick up their can. They could get a second trash can for some, which is a little bit more, Kathy, I think you told me the rate, $8 and...
$8.20.
$8.20?
$8.29.
$8.29 for a second garbage can, which is picked up every week, and then you can put anything you want in there. So, that might be an alternative for some. Or they just, you know, pay the additional 70 cents. And I'm guessing most residents want to continue to recycle, and will probably pay the extra 70 cents. Don't know exactly how many. We do know that if we have too many people that drop out of the recycle program, that that could increase the cost for everybody else. And so, we'll just have to kind of wait and see how that plays out. But this letter I've created is our response, and I'm looking for feedback on how you want me to send this out. We can put it in the newsletter, we can put it on social media. I mean, I don't know if you want it everywhere, we can put it wherever you want, just so people know going in. If you do get questions, you know, once people see it on their bill, and they want to know why, you can use this letter to explain, you can send this letter to them if you want to. You can have them give me a call, I'll walk people through it and discuss it, with the understanding is this is not a mandatory service. Like, water, you don't have a choice, you have to be on our water, but recycle, you do have a choice, you do not have to recycle. So, are there any questions? Yes?
In the letter, you don't mention the cost of that second can, right at the very end of it, you just said you can opt out to get a second can.
Yes, I did not put that, and I can change that and put that in there.
I think that'd be important, and people would be able to...
Know that that's an option, and here's the cost.
Well, and that it's more expensive for a gray can. It is every week, but...
It is more expensive.
You know, it's, six is pretty much in your household.
I mean, part of it, for some people, the responsibility of recycling is important to them environmentally and those types of things. And so, I think a lot of people will continue with the service even though it's 70 cents more. There's some that might have got a recycled can just because it was cheaper than having a second can. And so, for the reasons why people are recycling, when people come in to sign up for utilities, we automatically enroll them. And when we rolled this out back in 2010, if you remember, it was an opt-out program, meaning everybody was enrolled, and then you had to send us a letter saying you wanted out. And I think about a third of our residents, I think I was probably about right, opted out at that point.
Yeah, I opted out.
Yeah. There's quite a few, there's quite a few, there's a couple thousand.
Offered, bring back in.
And, you know, and the attitude towards recycling and what it means, I think, changes over time. I think for some, it becomes more and more of a, something that people want to do. And really, it's just up to the individual as to whether they want to do that or not, but...
So, I would say that it would probably be wonderful to have that conversation with new residents as they come in as to, you know, this is what, this is what you're getting. My other question is, that's not included on here, is have the items for recycling changed? So, on the top of my blue can, it tells me what things I can put in there. Have those things changed?
They haven't. Now, in some places, they have changed. So, in Salt Lake County...
I know.
They've restricted some things that were recycled that are not allowed to be recycled anymore.